For seventeen, two thousand and twenty-two to order. For the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Frye.
Here.
Mr. Han- Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Hanem.
Here.
Mr. McCann.
Here.
Mr. Richardson.
Here.
Ms. Stow.
Here.
Mrs. Westfall.
All seven members of City Council are present, so a quorum does exist this evening. I welcome all of you to our City Council meeting. I know some of you are here representing groups, uh, you're want to present to City Council about your issues on the ballot. Anyone else, if you have a particular issue, please raise your hand when we get to the item on the agenda, if you'd like to comment on it, and I will recognize you at the appropriate time. With that, please join us in our Pledge of Allegiance, this meeting led by Mr. Richardson.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are at Agenda Item Three, additions to the agenda. I don't have any additions, but I would like to strike Item thirteen A from the committee reports, unless, Mr. Hanem, there was a zoning annexation committee to meeting today I was not aware of.
No, we had one scheduled, we had to cancel.
We canceled it, that's exactly right. So we can strike that from the agenda for this evening. Mr. Frye, do you have any members, any items for the agenda?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Members of City Council. Hearing non, Mr. Sanford.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schreier, Chief Miller, Kevin Aller, and Mrs. Brining.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, with that, one small change, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and our agenda for this evening's meeting is approved. And Item Four is approval of the meeting minutes from our last meeting on October the third. Mr. Frye.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Hanson pointed out to me prior to our meetings earlier that there was one, um, one item that he, uh, he thought might need to be modified, which was the approval of the agenda, which had six yeas and zero nays, not seven. I don't recall there being seven of us here, so I don't know whether that was a typo or-
Everything else got seven.
Yeah, I didn't know if somebody had pushed, I don't recall somebody pushing back from the table, so.
All right, why don't we mark that here, and we can have a motion to approve the meeting minutes as amended, or as correct.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes, uh, for the council meeting of October third, two thousand, or October third, two thousand and twenty-two, as corrected, uh.
Second. Okay.
Yes, absolutely. No, 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 I'm okay.
Been moved and seconded to approve our meeting minutes from October the third, two thousand and twenty-two, as corrected. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and those meeting minutes are approved. Now, I would like to welcome to our council chambers to address City Council, um, the first of two organizations for this evening, representing the Slovenia Prevention Alliance, Executive Director Connie White. Welcome. Turn it on, that seems to-
Hello?
There we go.
Good evening. My name is Connie White. I'm the Executive Director of Slovenia Prevention Alliance. Many of you have made formally known us as Slovenia Community Action Team. I'd like to welcome some members of our board and our staff here. Um, I thank you for joining us today, and I'd like for, to thank you guys for having me here tonight. Our organization is extremely grateful for the support of City Council and the city leaders who have realized the importance of prevention in our community. So thank you for your, all your support. Since nineteen eighty-five, Slovenia Prevention Alliance has been the voice of prevention by empowering youth, families, and the community to make safe and healthy choices through education, awareness, and support. For thirty-seven years, you may have heard about we're doing, what we're doing in the Slovenia community, but have you heard about how we've grown? Have you heard about how we have adapted to the needs of our community? Have you heard about the updated and relevant programs and services we offer to youth, parents and caregivers, and the Slovenia community as a whole? And have you heard about the need? When I talk to people, many ask, are you that drug and alcohol group? And while the answer is yes, we are so, so much more. Today, I would like to provide you with a small snapshot of the programming and education that we offer. I'd like to quickly explain and help council realize what Slovenia Prevention Alliance means to the community, and help display the need for continued support and growth needed to keep offering these services. From the recent completion of our recent fiscal year here on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, we had the opportunity in one year to serve sixty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight individuals in our Slovenia community. Sixty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight individuals through ninety-five different services. One might ask, how we do this as such a small nonprofit coalition? Well, we have put time into developing a laser-focused logic model. Those seven areas of focus include alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, mental and emotional health, physical health, prescription drugs, underage drinking, underage marijuana use, and underage vaping. One example of a project is our Drug Takeback Days, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with. We use these to dispose of unused and expired medications. We partner with local law enforcement and community partners to put on this successful event. We also host ID checker loan programs, compliance checks, and seller server trainings. We have also had the opportunity to grow Red Ribbon Week here in our Slovenia schools. For those of you that might be unfamiliar with Red Ribbon Week, it is a national program that promotes healthy lifestyle choices by saying no to drugs and alcohol. As an organization, we wanted to do more all-encompassing approach to Red Ribbon Week regarding topics of not only drug and alcohol prevention, but also topics such as bullying, leadership skills, making smart choices and kindness, and mental health. We have now expanded this program to include a week-long packet at each elementary-age student within our Slovenia schools, public and private, as well as teacher discussion notes to make sure all have the resources and tools needed to learn about these important choices. This year, we made over fifteen thousand copies for students and provided these packets within our community. We had overwhelming support from the schools and positive feedback on this program. Another project is our youth groups offered in our Slovenia area of middle high schools. The need for our youth groups has continued to grow so much so that for us to get in front of more students, we started a new middle school youth program this past year. Our youth groups are offered multiple times a month and serve hundreds of kids every year. I asked two of our youth group students, um, to give us a quote of why they choose to be a part of our groups, and I wanted to share those with you. One says, "I have learned lifelong lessons in taking care of my mental and physical and emotional health, all while connecting myself within the community and being a leader." One other student said, "I joined the youth groups because I love what they do for local youth and their drive to form a more unified, strong, and loving community." Lastly, an important service offered are what we call community conversations, or town hall-style meetings. A topic of one of those conversations recently was about mental health and coping skills and suicide prevention. As we know, this is a relevant need. The American Academy of Pediatrics and the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry have declared a national state of emergency in children's mental health. It has shown that emergency department visits for suspected suicide attempts among adolescents and young adults has jumped by thirty-one percent in two thousand and twenty alone. SPA has made it a priority to continue to address mental health through all of our programming. While we continue to bring the education and services needed to our community, we simply need your help. For every conversation and every dollar invested into prevention right now is so important. The council's support continues to provide resources to maintain and increase prevention in our community. As you know, costs have gone up significantly. However, our activity and the need for our programming has gone through the roof in the last few years. Serving sixty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight individuals takes increased resources is a must. Your support strengthens Slovenia Prevention Alliance. Slovenia Prevention Alliance and the work we do in our community. This helps reiterate the fact that we are a good investment of resources that will continue to support the city of Slovenia and its residents. Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to listen and to learn more about Slovenia Prevention Alliance, and thank you as well for considering our request for continuation and an increase of funding. I am grateful to live in and raise my own children in a community that invests into its residents' future. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Connie about the Slovenia Prevention Alliance?
If I could just make a comment.
Mrs. Westfall.
Um, Connie, I think you did a beautiful job. I feel like I learned more about Slovenia Prevention Alliance in these last few minutes than I've known all of these years, and I've heard many conversations. So thank you for the, taking the time to prepare so eloquently, and I think you did a really great job of educating us.
Thank you. I'm glad to help.
Mr. Mayor, a comment?
Yes.
Being the representative to Slovenia Prevention Alliance, I am honored to work with this team, uh, on a monthly, annual basis. It's, uh, I, your, uh, approach to this is refreshing and rewarding. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Council is reviewing the budget in the next couple of months. We appreciate you being here. All right, with that, I'd like to move on to Agenda Item five B. We're very happy to have with us tonight Lori Hauser, the Senior Information Officer, you know, the Director of the Imagination Station. I've known her for years, she's been there since day one, before day one, done a lot of big things down there, and she does have an issue on the ballot this year, Issue ten.
Thank you, yes. Thank you so much. Thank you, very kind. Um, I think all of you recognize my colleague Carl Nelson, and, um, he has more of a following than I do, uh, from his channel thirteen, uh, segments, uh, in doing that. We have individual packets for each of you, um, for you to take a look at and review about Imagination Station and the, um, issue, the renewal that we have up on the ballot. Um, and just thank you for the time. Um, Slovenia has been a wonderful community to the Science Center, um, the City Council, Mayor, uh, in supporting, um, all of our programming that we've done, um, past issues that were on the ballot, as well as the work we do with even the Slovenia school system, and there's several businesses. Uh, Slovenia is one of our top cities in Lucas County for memberships. Uh, we have a lot of families that live here. Um, and behind me are three, um, of my team members that are also Slovenia residents, um, and part of our leadership team, uh, in doing that. And three of us have over twenty years' experience, and I think Kim is coming up on eight, six, six, so, um, in doing that. So, um, I've been very blessed with a wonderful team that's supported us. Um, I'm sure you all are familiar with Imagination Station. Um, we're very proud to serve this community, and we've been in our, the building we've been in and operating a science center over twenty-plus years as Imagination Station since two thousand and nine, under that name change in doing that. Um, we have an issue that's up on the ballot, and is Issue ten, um, that is up for a renewal. It's a straight renewal, there's no increase in funds or any changes in services or anything else that we be providing. The issue that we receive, or the funding, it's about thirty percent of our operating budget, um, to give you an idea. Um, it, we are not completely reliant on it, but it is a key factor in our budget. Um, generates about one point two million dollars a year for the Science Center, and the funds go directly into the facility. Um, that means, uh, traveling exhibits, like the Guinness Book of World Records that is there now. We bring about two to three exhibits in a year, um, maintenance of the facility, new experiences, and operating that. Um, and that's the team delivering, uh, if it's demonstrations or activities. The remaining funds, the seventy percent, is earned through either, um, donations, sponsorship, grants, uh, admission, and membership. And that is, um, what we refer to then as earned revenue from our gate or, um, companies in doing that. So we want to make sure it's all kind of balanced out in where the funds are coming from, and not one dependent. The levy, um, the, um, cost that, um, folks are incurring with that is about five dollars and twenty-one cents for a hundred thousand dollar home, and it is a five-year operating levy. Um, but again, it's a straight renewal. Um, the benefits will still continue, uh, for all Lucas County residents, which is, um, there's daily discounts for everybody coming in off of admission and membership. We offer discounts to schools as well, um, Lucas County schools, and then, um, there's free access for kids on Saturday, um, and that is all kids from Lucas County, twelve and under. You have to bring an adult, you can't drive by and slowly have the car come to a roll and, and five kids drop off. Um, uh, we encourage for families to come in, but one grown-up, um, in bringing the kids into the facility. And then we offer discount on, uh, films as well on Saturdays for kids. It was intentionally designed as a family day, um, in selecting that, and that's ten to five every Saturday. So, um, some things we do in Slovenia, um, so we were here on Saturday for the, or Sunday for the parade. Um, it was so lovely, what happened today, um, because yesterday I had sun in my face, and today it's freezing outside, but, um, we work a lot with the Slovenia schools, um, in our programming with some grant opportunities that we have with the third and fourth grade specifically, um, but very proud of our work with them, um, as well as, I'm proud of what the team did during COVID, um, and a lot of us were impacted, and I think we still don't know today how much our kids were impacted, um, and from, um, I know everybody tried doing the best that they could in this situation, um, and trying to deal with that, but I think we won't know for a couple of years until we're seeing, um, those impacts. But, uh, being a hands-on science center is slightly difficult in the middle of a worldwide pandemic, um, to operate. My team, um, operated by everybody working from home and turning their basements into their own little studio or labs, and they were able to produce over a hundred-plus videos that were created for schools to play or for families, um, home kits that were done, workshops on Facebook and online in doing that. So they had a pinch hit, and they had to do the whole thing, and, and you know what? Um, it wasn't working how we did it before, let's flip it and figure it out. And that's a life skill that we want to focus in on everyone, uh, when you're coming in, not just kids, uh, families, um, adults, seniors, anyone that's coming in is for everyone. If you haven't had a chance to check it out yet, we did the largest capital investment, um, that was finished over quietly when we were all shut down, uh, which had its convenience for construction, and was a twelve million dollar investment into the facility, the largest capital, um, investment since opening, and those funds were primarily raised by, uh, corporate community, uh, KeyBank is a, a signature, um, sponsor for that, but also individual gifts. We did get a million dollars from the state capital bill, um, and the city also of Toledo invested, um, some funds into the building, but privately raised, we did not use the public money that we receive, um, it was going right back into the experiences, but if you haven't checked out the theater, please do so, um, we're quite proud of it. Enjoy that.
Beautiful facility. I've been down there with grandchildren, your, the whole place is back open, and it looks better than ever.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, and, and we gave you individual packets. Um, I know, uh, we'd be asking for individual support, um, uh, if that is something, uh, from, uh, City Council members, not as the council as a whole. Um, Mayor has been very kind with his support and encouragement for Imagination Station individually, so we greatly appreciate that, and thank you for the time. I'd be happy to answer any questions, um, but then there's a full packet of information as well for you.
Can I remind council, it's too late for you to do something as a group, but it's individuals, you are perfectly able to do that whenever you choose.
Mr. Mayor, could I just make a quick comment?
Mrs. Westfall.
Lori, again, you did a, hi, you did a great job in your presentation as well, and it was really helpful to hear how you, um, managed through the COVID crisis.
Mm-hmm.
And I did hear that you were doing some, um, videos for schools and things.
Yes.
So I, I heard very good feedback about that, so wishing you all the best of luck with this levy, and-
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. I'm sure I'm also not preaching to the choir, but the importance of getting out and voting is very important right now for everyone to at least have your voices heard, so. Thank you so much.
Yeah, we got a lot of voters.
You do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck on Issue ten.
Thank you so much.
And thank you for being here this evening. We're gonna move ahead with our agenda, we're up to Agenda Item six, which is a report of the public hearing held this evening for zoning application two, two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Frye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we held a, uh, public hearing on, uh, Z A two dash two thousand and twenty-two, uh, with, uh, Mr. Schmidt, uh, from DS Developers, uh, uh, doing a, uh, a brief, uh, a, a brief description of, of what was going to potentially be built at forty-two fifteen North Picord Road. As a public hearing, we had the opportunity here from comments from the general public, there was a large, a relatively large crowd this, this evening. Uh, no members of the, of the, of the community spoke in, uh, favor of the, of the effort, uh, and for the potential construction. A number of people spoke against it, the biggest, uh, concerns, and I'll, I just was taking a few notes, it was concern about parking, um, the amount of sound, the, the density of the units was something we heard from a number of individuals, uh, some concern with the trees in the back. Uh, I do know that, uh, that Mr. Schmidt commented that, that he would also be putting privacy fencing, not just on the north side and the south side of the property, but also on the west side of the property, which backs up to, um, to the Lincoln Woods development, if I, if I recall my geography correctly. Um, there was a, a number of questions from the community, and, uh, and the, uh, meeting was, was adjourned at seven seventeen PM. But at this point, Mr. Mayor, we have, um, a decision to make, my thought process, if, uh, if other members of council are okay with it, and, uh, Mr. Hanem, if you're, you're comfortable with this, would be to put this into the zoning committee. Um, further consideration, I know there's some, um, conversation about modification of the plan with, uh, Mr. Burns, what's your thought process, Mr. Hanem?
Um, I know the developer has some, uh, time constraints on his offer property. Um, I forget, what do we have before our next council?
Next council meeting's in three weeks. Um, so you've got an extra week in there.
It's November seventh, right?
That's correct, and there's something scheduled there.
We have a zoning committee on cell towers, six forty-five. Um. Frankly, I haven't done anything to get ready. Uh, Leslie and I have talked about it, but we haven't looked at, I, I haven't looked at those legislation. Um, we noticed that zoning committee meeting, yeah?
Yes.
Okay, and we noticed the topic as well?
You can vote to discuss other items.
But if we're gonna refer, if we're gonna refer this, let's keep the time that we have for the zoning committee meeting. We need to amend the notice to include addressing, um, G A, uh.
Two dash two thousand and twenty-two.
Yeah, two dash, yeah. We need to amend that notice, amend that notice, and, um, have to have another meeting on the cell phone towers, depending on what happened. Talked with, urged the developer to contact, uh, Tim, Kevin, and, uh, to talk to you about- Talked with, urge the developer to contact Tim, Kevin, and talk to you about turnaround issue that you, that you mentioned tonight in hearing. See what, what kind of progress we can
It's really tight on that. I had to look at it as well.
Right. We have three weeks, so we should be able to get a lot done for that meeting.
Your intention would be to refer this to the zoning and annexation committee for that previously scheduled meeting on November the 7th.
November 7th at, that's at 6:45.
Correct.
There isn't a requirement for
No. This is the
Was for tonight, but not for that meeting.
And you can just vote to meeting. The notice includes any other matters the members vote to discuss.
Okay, so we're, we're good on the notice.
But there should be a motion to refer this to that committee.
I'll, I'll make a motion to revert, to refer zoning application ZA-2-2022 zoning committee.
A second.
And moved and seconded to refer zoning application to 2022 to the zoning and annexation committee meeting already scheduled for November the 7th at 6:45.
And Mr. Mayor, I'll just remind everybody, since we do have that planning commission approval, we, if we make any changes to that plan, we will need
Supermajority.
Five votes.
All right. I think we're done with that.
A quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry. There was a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Mr. Hanam, how do you picture having the site plan that was discussed involved with that meeting?
Sorry?
You know how you requested another site plan?
Well
We're discussing
My concern is that we had some comments tonight to make changes to the existing proposal that was approved. For example, the fencing and whether, whatever other issues we have. And we would need to have those incorporated into any approval.
Okay. Thank you.
So that could be done by a site planner. I suppose it could be done verbally by, by reference, which we've done before.
All right. Now, so ready to move on? Very good. That takes us up to Agenda Item 7. Mr. Aller is back to us with more property acquisitions for improvement project at Monroe Street and Silica and the Silica Bridge replacement. Mr. Aller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. They just keep coming. The first one in front of you tonight is kind of tied together with the approval that we made at the last meeting from Montgomery Holding Company. But there's a tenant sign on that property for Jamilin Fox and Allstate Insurance that will need to be removed during construction and then ultimately replaced at the end of construction. But because that sign does have value, we are required basically to, in essence, purchase that sign, if you will. And the, in ODOT's language, they call it a bill of sale. And that's what's in front of you today. That sign was appraised and depreciation value was taken into account and that value is $6,225. It is part of the right-of-way acquisition that we anticipated for the project and we recommend approval.
Okay. We do have Propose Ordinance 90-2022 for that bill of sale. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only, Ordinance Number 90-2022, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into a bill of sale agreement with Jamilin Fox for the Allstate Insurance sign that will be removed as part of Monroe and Silica Improvement Project and Silica Drive Bridge Replacement Project appropriating funds therefore in the amount of $6,225. And I would move passage as an emergency measure.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for passage of Ordinance 90-2022 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and Ordinance 90-2022 is enacted as an emergency measure. Okay, Mr. Aller, next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These are for, the next items are for easements, well actually, permanent right-of-way purchase as well as temporary construction easements. And both of the parcels are owned by the school. The first letter that you have, 7B, it's in regards to what we call parcel 12 that you can see in the regarding, regard section. And that is primarily the area of the Maplewood School. So basically the area north of Monroe Street. And then the other parcel, parcel 50, that is primarily the, the area on the south side of Monroe or the Northview parking lot. And we even get in, with that parcel, we even get into some of the area south of the bridge because it includes the bridge reconstruction as well. So parcel 12, the area north of Monroe Street was appraised at $27,625. And parcel 50, the area south of Monroe Street was appraised at $15,175. Again, both of these expenses were anticipated as part of the right-of-way and easement purchases and we would recommend approval.
Very good. And we are staying within the budget that's in the, the budget amount that's in, in the budget. Yes.
We're actually substantially less than the amount budgeted, yes.
All right. We do have in your council packets, Ordinance 91-2022 to enact these, these transactions. Mr. Richardson, would you like to read this or would you like me to spread it out to your committee?
I'll go ahead with this one.
Very good. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, and I want to introduce Ordinance Number 91-2022, read by title only, accepting temporary construction easement, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into a purchase agreement with the Board of Education of the Sylvania School District for the Monroe and Silica Improvement Project and the Silica Drive Bridge Replacement Project, dedicating the same for public purposes, appropriating funds therefore in the amount of $42,800. I would move passage as an emergency measure.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for passage of Ordinance 91-2022 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and Ordinance 91-2022 is enacted as an emergency measure. Mr. Aller, we're up to Agenda Item 7B.
This item is for the Speedway parcel. It's actually, it's actually in the name of Emrow Marketing. And the temporary easement in this area is necessary for the driveway approach, some new sidewalk. We do have a monument sign issue in that area and then for grading purposes, once the final project is complete. We have done a fair market value estimate on the project, or excuse me, on the parcel and that is $4,200. There has not been any disagreement with that estimate. Our primary thing on this estimate unfortunately is we kept, keep getting pushed from office to office. We're with the fifth office now on trying to get this resolved and a company as large as Emrow, it's sometimes typical and it's, it's where we're at. On this project, because the funding, it does have Federal Highway Administration funding involved in it, ODOT needs to certify that we have control of the right-of-way by November 15th of 2022. If we were to wait until our next meeting, that's very tight for ODOT. ODOT didn't feel comfortable that they would have enough time to be able to get that certification done. And so they asked us to move this forward. We continue to negotiate with them. In fact, we were hoping by the end of today that we would have this resolved and issue taken care of, but we're, we're not quite there. And we'll continue to negotiate between now and then and feel pretty confidently that we're going to be able to get this resolved. However, should we not, we do need the permission to appropriate that right-of-way and basically file the fair market value with the courts and take the right-of-way.
This is a timing issue that you need to start the process now.
Yeah.
And the state of Ohio is involved because there's state funds in the project. We need to follow their rules. So this is a appropriation, i.e. eminent domain, but it is not really contested. It's more of a bureaucracy issue, it appears. Maybe they just want you to travel amongst more and more offices and burn more fuel.
Yeah, apparently, yes.
When will we have to file something with the court?
Just as a point of clarification, this is actually the first piece of legislation that will come before you prior to the actual filing of the action. This is the resolution declaring it necessary. The next, at the next meeting will be the ordinance at the rate, actually appropriating the $4,200 and filing the lawsuit. So nothing can happen between now and the next meeting on November 7th.
That's three weeks off.
So we adopt this, we have three weeks to get this resolved.
Correct, yes.
This is a temporary easement. Am I correct about?
Yes.
So we're just asking for during the construction process, but they will have their whole unit back in place.
It, it'll be back in place. We do have a sign issue. The sign is actually someplace that it shouldn't be.
And shouldn't have been before.
Yeah. Yeah. And so we are trying to work that out with them and we, like I mentioned, we're confident that, that we have that. It's just getting the right office to
Respond.
Yeah, sign.
Do they have the sign permit?
They do. There was an agreement a long time ago when that sign was put in of some things that should have been recorded that weren't recorded. And so there, yeah. So
Okay. Got it. I know who was involved.
Yeah.
All right. So we do have a resolution declaring the necessity of appropriating the property. Resolution 18-2022. This was amended by the clerk, put an ordinance number on it in the first place. You all have a new copy of it, I believe, at your council places. It is properly Resolution 18-2022. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only, Resolution Number 18-2022, a resolution declaring it necessary and declaring council's intent to appropriate certain property for the Monroe and Silica and Silica Drive Bridge Replacement Project from Emrow Marketing Company, authorizing the mayor to cause written notice to be given. And I would move passage as an emergency measure.
Second.
Moved and seconded for passage of Resolution Number 18-2022 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and Resolution 18-2022 is enacted as an emergency measure. All right, we are now ready to move on to Agenda Item 8. Mr. Aller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have participated for several years now with the Ohio Department of Transportation. Back in 2014, they decided to start offering their bridge inspection program to municipalities so that the inspections were done on a consistent basis. You can imagine if each municipality was doing it, Sylvania would do it different than Malmee, different than Perrysburg and different than Toledo. And so ODOT did this to make everything more consistent. It's worked out very well for us and we get good information from the firm that performs the inspections and we would recommend that we continue with the program.
This is the program, Mr. Aller, just to refresh our memories, that rates the bridges from in really good shape to need to be replaced shape?
That, that is correct.
And is it a requirement doing this to receive OPWC funds for those bridge projects?
The, the bridges have to be rated. A municipality can do their own, but we, we use the ODOT program.
But as it says in this, in your letter, I believe, or in their documents, this is at no cost to the city of Sylvania to do it.
Exactly. Yeah, it doesn't cost us anything.
Even though there are prices listed in here of $550,000 per project area, that's not our prefer, our concern.
No.
Okay.
We are required to post some signage, maybe, or what kinds of things by participating? Put this somewhere. There are some obligations on us, right?
It's more so to, depending on the condition ratings
Yeah.
and things of that nature. We don't have anything that falls within those classifications.
I see that.
And then of course, on, on certain bridges, you have to post load limits and things of that nature.
Yeah, it was in, in the resolution, it says that the city of Sylvania agrees to pay 100% of the cost of those features, not including the scope of services. Those features may include, but not be limited to, the purchasing and erecting of recommended weight limits, posting signs, location of scour plant, critical finding reports such as parcel of anyway, I'm assuming these things are relatively insignificant.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
It would, it would just be a couple hundred dollars if, if needed.
If they find the bridge is falling down, then we have to deal with it, but
Correct.
We would have to deal with that in any case, but
Yep.
We are obligated to do these things that are in the resolution.
Yes.
Okay.
This is an important planning tool for the city's capital improvement budget as we go along.
Yeah.
We've worked on the bridge on Monroe Street a few years ago. We're working on Silica next year. We need to do this.
But if we had to put up a, a weight limit posting, that's, we handle that?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we do that. We, we actually have done it. We have it on bridges, so.
And we have room in our, we always have room in our budget to put a weight
Yes.
Weight limit sign, right? Okay.
Own sign shop.
Fine, neither.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Aller? If not, we do have Resolution 17-2022 to accept this bridge program. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Resolution Number 17-2022 by title only, consenting to the city of Sylvania's participation in the Ohio Department of Transportation's municipal bridge inspection program, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to execute contracts as required. I move passage as an emergency measure.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for passage of Resolution Number 17-2022 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and Resolution 17-2022 is enacted as an emergency measure. Now up to Agenda Item 9, school zone flasher replacements. Mr. Aller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our existing school zone flashers are extremely aged and being able to obtain parts is becoming more and more of a challenge. We've had to reach out to other communities and kind of scarf away some of their stock that they've been trying to hold back and, and it's been more and more of a challenge, especially with the supply issues that we're all dealing with. This was actually a project that we had scheduled, has been in our five-year plan for about four years. And, but because of some issues that we had this past year, we just thought that it was best that if we stepped that up to this year and get it done. We will be replacing with this project four of the five school zone flashes that we have in town. Those are at Highland Elementary, McCord Road, Junior High, St. Joe's and the Toledo Islamic Academy. The fifth location, which is at Maplewood Elementary, that'll actually be done as part of the Monroe and Silica project. We are also considering, we're taking a look at timing. It may be beneficial because we're going to be working in that section of Main Street. We may hold off on the St. Joe's site and do that as part of the Main Street project. But we're, we're asking for permission to move forward with the bid with it included and, you know, give us the opportunity to make that decision from a timing standpoint on whether to do it now or to do it with that project. Either way, the expense will be the same. It'll just be what project it goes into, so. The estimated construction cost is $133,344. This was a budgeted project as part of our 223, our permissive tax account, and we would ask for permission to advertise.
Okay. And technology-wise, this is going to give you more flexibility in the, in the service department to control the sign.
Yes, it gives us much more flexibility. The, these, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The technology with these allows, everything can be done via
Department to control the sign?
Yes, it gives us much more flexibility. These, thank you, Mr. Mayor, the technology with these allows, everything can be done via wireless. We'll be able to set in our office and change the schedule. If a school decides to have a, change their two-hour delay schedule or something of that nature, we can do that right from our office. The way it currently is, we have to have a contractor do that on-site at each signal. And if anything gets changed, we have to have them go back out and reprogram everything. With this technology, we'll be able to do everything right from our office now.
All right. We need a motion to authorize.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Mr. McCann.
I just, Mr. Aller, I just wanted to ask the timing of the project itself, because you mentioned supply chain and other factors.
Our intent is to receive bids on November ninth and still award it this year, and then, fingers crossed, that we will have them in time for the start of next school year.
That's, that was the answer. Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Aller? Hearing none, Mr. Richardson, we need a motion authorizing the clerk to advertise for bid.
I move to authorize administration to advertise for bids for these school zone flasher replacements.
Second.
Moved and seconded to authorize the clerk to advertise for those bids. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Aller, before you move away from there, I was driving on Arum Road this morning, and I saw FET Electric working on those Sylvanee Trail Crossing Lights. Anything to update on that?
We are hopeful that we will have power to the lights by the end of this week, in that we will be able to have a community event opening as early as next week. Depending on what happens with Edison, it could go into the following week, but we should have that up in power and ready to go within two weeks at the outside.
I would assume Toledo Ascent crews were among the thirty thousand crews that have been in Florida and South Carolina.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of their guys are down there.
All right. All right, the next is ordered legislation. It's Agenda Item Ten, Proposed Ordinance Ninety-two, two thousand and twenty-two, authorize a donation of eight hundred and thirty dollars for the Gold Star and Blue Star memorials we discussed at the previous meeting. Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number ninety-two dash two thousand and twenty-two, all members of council having received in advance. I'll read by title only. Authorizing the donation of eight hundred and thirty dollars to the River Road Garden Club for the purchase of a Gold Star Memorial to be erected in the city of Sylvanee as a memorial for the families who have lost a loved one in service to our country through the United States Armed Forces. I move final passage of ordinance number ninety-two dash two thousand and twenty-two as an emergency measure.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number ninety-two, two thousand and twenty-two as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance ninety-two, two thousand and twenty-two is enacted as an emergency measure. Agenda Item Eleven, we had our first reading two weeks ago. This is for, as ordered by the U.S. Court, for the cell tower that's on the Northview property. I'd like Mrs. Brining to give us any updates since then and a report from our attorney on it.
Sure. I think you all received the memo from Mr. Sapucik about the authority for the judge to make the order that he did. Does anybody, did anybody have any questions about?
The judge's opinion was that we had to be agreed with the.
Right.
With that, but my question was, still remains, is compelling us to vote a certain way on an ordinance?
I asked that question along. I write the memo, but I didn't receive any question back. Do you feel comfortable with the response that you got from the memo or?
No.
No? Okay.
I'm going to jump in here. The court has ordered us to issue a special use permit. Administration cannot do that. It takes a vote of city council to do that.
I'm not missing that, Mr. Mayor. What I'm missing is someone telling me how to vote. Ordering, sorry.
That's the remedy that the, as the case law, the statute, the laws says, that's the remedy. The court cannot, under the Telecommunications Act, the court's remedy is to order the city council or order the denying body to approve it, whether that be trustees or city council. I understand your fundamental issue with it, but we are, well, let me just give you the second part of this update. So last week, the attorneys for Tarpon Towers wanted an update, and so we had a conference call with Judge Zuhari on why the special use permit has not been granted yet. If it isn't issued, if it's not approved today, I would expect fully that a motion to compel or sanctions would be filed by their attorneys this week. So that's.
Mrs. Brining and Mr. Mayor, I, you know, had similar concerns to Mr. McCann, but I did feel very comfortable with the wording here. It's as clear as a bell that we did not have a choice and that this was ordered by us. I like your wording here.
Yes.
And so when I read this, I felt.
Right. I don't.
It's clear. We have no choice.
Right.
All right. You've heard the city's law director give her update. You do have in your council packets ordinance number eighty-nine, two thousand and twenty-two. You had a first reading two weeks ago. Mr. Frye, what would you like to do?
Well, I'm comfortable with putting this in front of council for passage as an emergency measure. I obviously can't speak for other members of council. I am annoyed, like I think many of us are, about the nature of where we're at in regards to being ordered, but we are where we are, and I guess I'm going to have to grit my teeth. So I'm willing to read this as the second reading and make a motion to pass an emergency measure. Well, I'd like to, I would like to, for second reading purposes, introduce ordinance number eighty-nine dash two thousand and twenty-two, and I'd like to read by title only. Issuing special use permit number SUP dash one dash two thousand and twenty-one as ordered by the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio, Western Division, and I move passage of ordinance number eighty-nine dash two thousand and twenty-two as an emergency measure.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the passage of ordinance number eighty-nine, two thousand and twenty-two as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance eighty-nine, two thousand and twenty-two is enacted as an emergency measure. We'll forward this tomorrow morning. I'm sure people will be interested.
I'd like to, while you forward it, why don't you ask them what their schedule is for?
Good question.
Yeah.
Because I can't answer a cellphone call in my kitchen as it is.
That has become the number one issue in our downtown. When I walk up and down the streets, people say, why can't you fix the cell service, Mayor? And they don't know.
Because council wouldn't.
I say it's a.
You can blame that. You can blame us for that.
I have not done that, but I've also said, oh, did they roll back the service on it? And I also say, when the Sylvanee schools are in session or Lord's University in session, it goes and gets worse. Sometimes it's not a problem at all. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Twelve. We have a notice of a liquor permit transfer to My Way Cantina. It's coming from the old Sundown Cantina. Keith Miller, you have any comments about either party? All right. Council has the right to request a local hearing. Up to you, Frye.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion not to request a hearing for the transfer of liquor permit to Tankaroos Investments LLC DBA Sundown Cantina at fifty-six seventy-six seventy-eight and eighty Mayberry Square.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded not to request a local hearing for this liquor permit transfer. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we are up to Agenda Item Thirteen. Thirteen A has been removed from the agenda. We are up to the report on the committee of the whole meeting held this evening concerning a tax incremental financing possibility. Mr. Frye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Committee of the whole met, all members of council were in attendance, the mayor and many members of the administrative staff were also in attendance. Before we started the meeting off, Mrs. Stowe asked to push back from the table. That motion was passed unanimously, and we moved on with the meeting regarding tax increment financing in the downtown area. So after a brief introduction by Mr. Sanford, Mr. Grisdale from Revelry, went through the potential revenue streams, discussing a thirty-year TIF. Basically, he reviewed the split between, projected split between revenues that the schools would receive, revenues that the city would receive if this was passed and approved. Basically, over a thirty-year period of time, there would be embedded inside that thirty-year TIF, a ten-year rolling TIF, which basically has a specific meeting, as I understand, according to revised code, and during those timeframes, that those revenues would be split during those ten-year rolling TIF periods, seventy-five, twenty-five, with the remainder of the time where the schools would be kept whole, which is about fifty-six percent of the total property tax revenues. Apparently, earlier this evening, the school board voted to, I think the appropriate term is endorse a TIF, is that correct? Endorse the TIF, so they're fine with the structure after having met with the administrative staff and Mr. Grisdale. So at this point, the next step is to set a public hearing. And we have an ordinance that's been drafted and was passed out by Mrs. Brining to all members of council, but we now need to set a public hearing for the consideration of the TIF and based on, one of the things that was requested by Mr. Hanam during the meeting was to secure a map of the TIF district well prior to the meeting so that the general public could have that as well. Thirty-day notice, is that correct, Mrs. Booker, for a public hearing? So when is the next date we could have a public hearing? Would we do it on the twenty-first? Is that possible? Of November?
Yeah, make it by the seventh.
But it seems like we ought to be able to make the twenty-first.
Twenty-first, you could.
Okay.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, members of council comfortable with that prior to the council meeting on the twenty-first?
What time do we want to do that?
I don't know that this is going to be particularly controversial, but I also don't have a great sense for public hearings these days, so I'd like to leave a little bit of extra time, although I obviously may, Mayor, I assume we could push the council meeting back if necessary.
We absolutely can. I think seven P.M.
Seven o'clock? Okay, I don't hear anybody raising, nodding their heads in a negative direction. So I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for the purposes of the TIF in the downtown area at seven P.M. on Monday, November twenty-first.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to schedule a public hearing for the establishment of a TIF in the downtown area for Monday, November the twenty-first at seven P.M. in these council chambers, and to order the clerk to advertise the same. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh.
Go ahead.
Did you have a question, Mr. McCann? Because I haven't finished the report technically yet, so.
Oh, sorry.
So with that being said, Mrs. Westfall made a motion to adjourn. Mr. McCann seconded, and a six to oh vote. Ms. Stowe had pushed back from the table. We voted to adjourn, and the meeting adjourned at seven thirty-seven. Sorry. Mr. McCann.
I know we already passed this, but I meant to, I even highlighted my notes, and I forgot to ask a couple of questions regarding the order for the ordinance eighty-nine dash two thousand and twenty-two. And this was Mr. Hanam's referral. Do the items within the recommendations of the approval, are they going to be enacted? In other words, nationally-recognized standard for cell tower construction? Next, will certify the tower as physically, structurally safe annually? And does it contain the decommission of the tower? These are points one, two, and three.
Yep, in section one, yes.
Of the ordinance.
Of the ordinance.
Of the order.
Of the ordinance. Of the ordinance in section one, those are all contained in this.
So nothing changes from what we've passed. We're just approving what we had already put in place.
That's correct.
And they're not objecting to that.
The applicant has not contested those.
Thank you. Appreciate the update and clarification.
We have now, up to Agenda Item Fourteen. Are there any committee referrals to be made at this time?
Mayor, I understand, Finance Committee is going to meet at seven thirty here, or?
I believe it's here.
Yes. Here, but there may be a conflict for this room, so if that's the case, then we'll move to the conference room across the hall.
There's no comment.
Okay, so.
Okay.
No shots until later, so therefore, we'll be here at bright and early, seven thirty.
Flu clinic.
Okay.
Oh, flu clinic.
Yeah. Sorry. Need to be more specific here, my apologies.
There's three kinds of shots.
Yeah, yeah. Good shots, good shots, and bad, really bad shots.
All right. I do, we have an extra second piece of paper for our agenda tonight listing the information items. I draw your attention to the third quarter two thousand and twenty-two management reports and encourage you to review them, put them in your binders. There's interesting information in there that might help you address questions. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and this council stands adjourned for three weeks until our next regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, November the seventh, two thousand and twenty-two at seven thirty P.M. Thank you all for attending and sticking with us.